I will call the August Wapon Common Council meeting to order. We will do the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence.
The United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, person wishing to address the council. We try to keep two minutes. Please state your name and your address and the subject of your comments. Who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Cool beans. State your name and address when you get up here, yes.
My name is Barbara Thorp. I live at 120 Gateway Street and I would like to make a comment about End of the Trail. I feel that this is rich in history and I have always come to Wapon and it's probably the first thing I've ever noticed is sculptures. They're beautiful. I look at Shaler, what he was thinking and I also see that Frasier, being the artist that he was, did a beautiful job. And I feel that a city of sculptures, End of the Trail, should stay as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jay.
I would like to remind people, two minutes, Jay Graff. I've seen you talk. Jay Graff, AT Taylor Street. I'm going to try to keep this very short, two minutes. At the very smart business plan development, you always leverage your greatest assets to overcome any weaknesses or shortcomings that you have. The end of the trail is a representation of the fine collection of sculptures we have. It's so critically important to be included in your branding and all your marketing efforts. If you want to bring greater velocity of money to the community, you have to bring people to the community with money. And cultural tourists spend about $200 a day more than what a conventional tourist will spend. I'd like you to take these things into consideration when you move forward with this decision this evening. But I'm very much in favor of including that in our branding and replacing the iconic corn people logo. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. You have like 30 seconds to spare. All right, who would like to go next?
I'll go next.
Sure.
Jason Whitford, 201 Brandon Street.
Sure.
I, uh, thank you. I came here at the last meeting, glad to see there's a bigger crowd. So yeah, I was here the last time I spoke in favor of the End of the Trail being on the signs. And I want to thank you, Mayor Bishop, for your leadership because in my opinion, the last meeting, I didn't see any leadership except for Mayor Bishop. Being an older person, you're there to make decisions. So I think what needs to happen is you need to step up and make a decision. And I'm trying to be respectful here, but the last thing I want to hear is, well, if this goes in favor, then I'm going to make the motion to reconsider. If you feel strongly about something, all of you, put her out there, put it on the table. That's what you, that's why we elect you. That's, you know, and, uh, you know, there, this guy ran on this issue. So I'm not sure what everybody's afraid of. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that we're staying well below the two minutes today. Who would like to go next? Cool.
Linda Vermania, 620 Tackern Street. I guess I first of all want to say on social media, there's always this question of why did nobody else come forward in 2018 with this branding being done? I think at that time, it was not put out there to the public exactly what this branding was for Wapon. And if you look at our city and what these statues, these sculptures, what you want to say, call them, have done for this community, the branding that is out there right now, what is that telling somebody from outside of our state, even within our state, why they should come to Wapon, be a tourist, see what we have, spend money here? What do we have here in this town other than the statues and the Horecat Marsh? Yes, we have Ager Hoss, we have all that, but seeing a cornfield isn't going to bring somebody here. So I think this whole, well, why didn't anybody come forward? Because it wasn't put out there exactly what was happening at that time. And that's really sad that occurred. And I guess I'm in favor of keeping the statues. And if somebody's afraid of being sued because of these statues, then you take that up when that occurs. But to offset that possibility of happening is when you put out better signage by the statues or with what our city is representing and what these statues actually mean and what they represent. We are not being negative with the statues and sculptures. We are actually honoring the Native Americans and what they went through. And let's not erase history. It's there and the youth of this community and the youth after them, they need to learn. And as adults, I would really hope we don't take that away from them.
Thank you. And next, Dave. Thank you for your patience last year in the road construction project.
Dave Hop from 807 Rock River Avenue, Little History. 1964, Wapon celebrated its 125th anniversary of the city. And at that time, the National Bank, and I believe it was the leader to sponsor, Chief John Bigtree, who was the model for the statue to come. And I still have a brochure and I was fortunate enough to meet the chief, shake his hand. I was only 16 years old at the time, but he wasn't offended by that. He was, like Linda said, he was honored to have been a pattern for that sculpture. He also was a model for the buffalo nickel. There were two other Indians as well and they made a combination of the three faces for that nickel. But obviously I'm in favor of the statue and so I hope that we can keep it.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Mr. Lake, I'm sorry, Jim. If I call him Mr. Lakey, he'll come up here and hit me with his cane.
Jim Lakey, I'm 419 West Spring Street. During the EAA, I was out in the cemetery watering plants, forest farm, and a car pulled in, they pulled up to this recording angel from Arkansas. I went, wow. I said, what brings you here? Well, they had come to Wapon to eat at one of our establishments and they picked up a brochure of the city of, and I went, really? And with that, another one was pulling down around, a car from Illinois was taking pictures of the end of the trail. And you know what? They weren't taking pictures of the corn field, the wheat field, or anything like that. It's all the way around us. They came up through it. The statues brought them. And I'm hoping we can definitely keep this. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, who'd like to go next? Mr. Vina Ma.
And Vina Ma, 761 Men's Drive. I think everybody's said what I wanted to say, so that's okay. It's been such an honor to see these statues and what it represents to the city. I respect all of you guys. I called each one of you and got your opinion on it. I think the showing tonight of the favorism towards keeping something that has meant a lot to this community and means a lot to everybody in this community, so.
Thank you, Ken. I would like to go next.
Shelby Gray, 224 South Earl Street. I am definitely in favor of bringing back the statues to Wapon and keeping them here forever. It says, if you go online and Google James Earl Frazier, End of the Trail, it comes up, Wapon, Wisconsin. That's the only place it shows and that's what comes up is Wapon, Wisconsin. And keep in mind that in 1975, it was named a Wisconsin Registered Landmark, the End of the Trail. In 1981, it became a National Register of Historic Places. We need to celebrate this. Mr. Shaler once said, Mr. Shaler wants these works of art to bear fruit and he would be happy to know that they brought to Wapon an act of waking consciousness of art. Let's not erase Wapon's history. Let's embrace our past and the statues.
Thank you. All right, who likes to go next? Laurie, Rockon.
Laurie Page, 512 Tackern Street. Just to follow up on you. Before I came here, I looked at what was on the website, all the pictures of the statues and then all the commentary underneath. And it was said that Mr. Shaler commissioned this from Earl Frazier at a cost of $50,000 as a tribute to the Indians, what they went through.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Terry. Hi, Terry.
Hello.
How you doing?
I'm good. My name is Terry.
What's your address?
620 West Main Street, right next to Family Videos.
It's a good neighborhood.
It is a good neighborhood, yes. And first of all, I'd like to say, I want to come here not as the food pantry lady. I want to separate the two. So please, please don't stop donating, or you'll get mad at me because it's not about me. It's about the people that were helped. It's about our city having honor for those that can or won't take care of themselves and their children. So whatever I say, please do not disregard the food pantry and what you do for it. Because without all of you, we cannot do it. It takes unity. And right now, this city is divided and over a statue, over a piece of art, awesome. And I am also an Oneida woman of the Iroquois Nation. And Chief John Bigtree, one of, was of the Seminole Nation. We were, they're five nations together and he was also Iroquois. So I come to as a Native American woman that works with many tribes and has seen much of the oppression that has happened and they're still dealing with that trauma. There's little kids that, I can't even tell you the horrible stories that they have lived through. And I have many friends on wounded knee that live there, live in Porky Pine, they live in White Clay. I have a church in White Clay, Nebraska, which is two miles away from Pine Ridge. And I don't want to get rid of any of these statues. They're all magnificent works of art. There was a heart behind them. There is a person doing them with good intent. But in this day and age, it's a different thing. And I, and I think that the End of the Trail on its own is awesome and glorious and grand. And it took a lot of doing. But I think that Wapon, which the real name is Wapon and it's a Monominee word. And it means first day, it means dawn of day. Why wouldn't we have the Dawn of Day statue being our logo? I don't want any of these statues to be taken away or taken down or destroyed or anything. That is not anybody's intent. The intent is to look at the integrity behind what they represent now. Wapon means dawn of day, first light. We are first light. That's our city's destiny, first light. Light means, light means goodness and mercy and grace and kindness and gentleness and provision. And the End of the Trail means the end of the trail. And I have, I have an idea that if we could get an artist, there are 12 tribes in Wisconsin. And if we could get an artist from every tribe to sculpt a new sculpture and not put it by the end of the trail, because the end of the trail is on that side of the river. It's by the cemetery. It's done, it's gone, it's the end of the trail. Go over the bridge and there's a beautiful clearing with a fountain and native landscape, bushes, things like that, and put those sculptures in there. And if it's all about what you want is to make money off this sculpture, that would bring people in. You would have Native Americans coming in, you would have people that are artists coming in, you would have so many people coming in and spending their money in Wapon. I don't think how we could lose with that. That's how I feel.
Thank you.
Whether you, whether you take it or not, that's up to you. But, and I have been praying for three days about this and really speaking the Lord in his mind. And I don't want division in the city. There's nothing worse than a city divided against itself. And I've been declaring that Wapon is not divided against itself and will not be. You know, and that roots up from years ago when the schools, they had the upper, upper city and the lower city. And the school system was divided and we still have Dodge County, Fondler County. It's one big divide and we have to get over that. We have to bring ourselves to look at each other with dignity and respect. And that includes the First Nations because like it or not, the First Nations people are the gatekeepers of the land. We see more and we just, we just are more intuitive about things going on in the land and the land's talking about the people. And, and we want goodness and we want, we want, we want better than what's happening right now over state. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Who'd like to go next?
Can we say something on?
You want to go now, Todd?
If I could, I didn't know whether I could bust in or not. I apologize.
You're good.
Okay, my name's Todd Snow. I live at 505 Southwest Street. I'm isolating from COVID or I would be there. I'm a business owner and I'd just like to say that I think that the End of the Trail statue itself should be highlighted by Wapon and certainly should be part of our marketing strategy. I support Rod and everything he wants to do with that. I've let my alderman know what my thoughts are. And I really appreciate Terry's comments and I appreciate everybody listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda? Still state your name and address though, please.
Linda Nichols, 606 Rensway. I have a question. I asked it on social media over the weekend and I was given some gobbledygook thing and that I should read a 200-page document from 2018. What, I understand it's abstract in the marketing sense. What does the current logo signify? Does anybody know? I know I was told at one point.
You can answer if you want. You want to? Sure, Rockon.
It is an abstract piece of art, essentially, right? And it's meant to symbolize all of the resources and all of the assets coming together to make Wapon united and to represent the strengths that we have in natural resources as well as art and human resources. So it's abstract, extremely abstracted, that's what it's supposed to mean. Because to me, I have no idea what it means. But my other suggestion might be, I don't know how it came to be, but there's a beautiful painting that I guess some class at the high school made.
Yeah.
It's on the side of the building.
Yep.
And what does it say our city is?
Sculptures.
City of sculptures. And on that are three of the sculptures and a portion of this abstract thing. Maybe we could consider using that as the city logo, then three sculptures and the abstract thing that apparently the city paid a lot of money to have made. It's all there.
Thanks, Linda. Who'd like to go next? Tom.
Give me time. It's been so long since I addressed the council.
You used to be a regular back in the day.
Forty-eight years, forty was a virginity element and eight in tourism. I think the subject that I have before you tonight is regarding the End of the Trail. I did a little research the last couple of days and I found that way back when, when I arrived here in 1939 from Montello, I was kind of acquainted with the little trail. When I got in high school, even our tennis team wore t-shirts bearing the trail. End of the trail is not news to me. It's been here a long, long time. The people of Wapon do not recognize the fact that they have a $50,000 gym on the banks of the Rock River. I can't understand why there would be anybody in opposition. You have one of the prime goals of any city to have a destination claim. What does Wapon have, the prisons? Do you want stripes to be worn around town? Do you want to be asked, did the warden let you off? What do you have? The End of the Trail is your answer. And I don't think that you should let that slip by no means. I think if everyone would take up all his time and drive out to the statue, park there for a half hour, think about that gentleman on that horse, think about the horse, the end of the trail, they reached the end of their day, they reached their end of the trail, the Rock River. How, how far do I cross? However, I think that if everyone would take one of these booklets, and I don't know if anybody's here from the Tourism Committee or the Chamber of Commerce, that should be in everyone's pocket. And with that, I encourage the council to give city consideration. And my alderman, previous alderman Nancy Ower, is the same board. And I think I know the rest, I'm not committed with. However, give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, who'd like to go next? Mr. Bill Wheeler, former Common Council President and the best dressed man in the room.
See you, see me. Bill Wheeler, 345 Mark Madison Street, right across from the iconic fame statue, which I'm lucky enough to see every day and out my window, actually. So I can attest that plenty of people do pull up there and are looking at the statue and that's, that's what we're kind of here for. But let's talk a little bit about the land that the statue is on. I mean, it was placed there, you know, for really the majestic view overlooking the Melpon. But also, you know, it's been stated, you know, it tells a story about Clarence Shaler and that he used to give to Wapon, which incorporates all the statues. But also right across the road is where Wapon was founded, where Seymour Woozy Wilcox first settled. And Woozy Wilcox traded various things with the Native Americans right across the river. Then over at Harrisville Park, it's named after the Harris's, in case you didn't know, which were the direct descendants of the Wilcox family. So the whole area really kind of encompasses the beginnings of Wapon. And as was mentioned earlier, I don't think we're a divided city. I just think we're a city now that really can't pick up its mind. I spent 30 years in economic development. I understand doing a plan, doing a brand, but that's, but they are under plans. And I think we woke up and found out that this community does not want, whatever the logo was intended to be, nobody really can look at it and say, as our brand in Wapon. I saw the rendition for the Welcome to Wapon sign. And so I said, welcome to Wapon, naturally adventurous. That doesn't mean anything to me. It could be a good tagline for a gentleman's club and upscale, of course. But that would be about it. And also looking at the new sign, enough to pick on them. But, you know, what I saw, which, you know, was the various things in the arrows, it has Dawn of Day. But it doesn't indicate if it's a statue, doesn't have a picture of Dawn of Day. Somebody looks at that and they're in Wapon, they go, why am I going to see the Dawn of Day? And that's why it's also important to use the End of the Trail as our signature statue. It is the most famous statue. It's probably the only one of ours that you can walk into a shop in the Midwest, Southwest and see a bronze casting of, you can buy and take home. So now I urge you to reconsider the earlier votes. Stick with the economic plan, take another look at the branding and understand really what Wapon's all about, what the people of Wapon are about. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Who'd like to go next? Hard? Fine. Back in the day, I'd have to let you speak.
Mark Holman, 26 Talk Like Name. Branding, just going to carry on or highlight those. Branding should be simple. Our logo, simple. People see it from the area around, they know what it is. Fill me in the comment. Go out west. I bought a statue of the End of the Trail or a replica of the End of the Trail in Las Vegas when I was up there a number of years ago. See it. I see Wapon very simply when it comes down to branding. People know, you know, the End of the Trail is Wapon. Branding should be simple. We'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Mike?
Point 1, 601 Robin Road. I'd like to echo the sentiments of a lot of people in this world here. I support continuing with the branding that we had before. I find the logo to be rather generic and bland and really not representative of what our city is. I had a conversation with Jason, he's my alderman. We talked a little bit about this and I don't think necessarily that the End of the Trail stickers have to be on every wayfinding sign. Maybe we can find a way to cover all of our statues. And he brought up a good point. If we have a wayfinding sign that points to a particular statue, let's have the sticker for that corresponding statue on that sign. I realized that adding more different stickers, different types of stickers is going to add cost. I saw an interesting comment on social media last week. Somebody was asking, what are we doing with the current signs? Are they going to be sold? Fundraising opportunity. Let the city have an auction, sell off all the old signs, take proceeds, put it in the pot towards the stickers that, of Mayor's.
You know, it's funny you mention that because when we had the garbage cans and the benches downtown, you know, the trail, they sold them off and brought in pretty good money for it. And you're right, I'm all for having the different wayfinding signs with different sculptures, silhouettes on them. But I was offering to pay for the stickers myself because the city budget's tight and I can't afford to do that. However, today Steve Booth did tell me he donated towards it. And when Mark Holman called me earlier, he said he donated and just raised his hand. I do think we could, and Jay is and Jason is, and Linda is. I do think you could raise the money to get the silhouettes of all the statues. So the 27 wayfinding signs, they could be sporadically scattered around and it doesn't need to just be the end of the trail, it can be all of them. But this is only because the community is rallying around being the city of sculpture. But I thank you for speaking. All right, who'd like to go next? Kyle Clark, our former mayor and all-around good guy. How you doing?
Good. Appreciate all the comments tonight. Appreciate the open meeting. Good discussion. The signs are up. They, what, according to the agenda, I was looking it over, it just said. They what, um, according to the agenda, I was looking it over, it just said your mayor's correspondence presentation, wafer signage and branding. Didn't say anything about motions or actions, what is the tonight is just for comment or?
Well, it's my third meeting requesting this, so what happened was according to the research and when I asked the Board of Public Works to approve the wayfinding signs sometime ago. And so I went to them first and I offered to get silhouettes similar to this that would cover it up and say city of sculpture.
Right.
They punted it to the city council in July, the council in July took no action. It made the front page of the Daily Citizen, my phone blew up and I told people to call their alderman and that's why they're here. If you pick up on what Mike just said, I'm fine getting silhouettes of all the sculptures. But what it is, it's a sticker that goes over the corn.
No, I understand.
Yeah, so that's what I'm going to be requesting on number twenty on the agenda, that's what it is.
So it's not a motion to discontinue the current branding or logo?
No, it's just the wayfinding and welcome to Wapon signs.
So really, the whole issue is putting a sticker on the sign?
That I'm willing to pay for. Yeah.
I'm sure they have to do that, but.
I've taken.
So that's what action is?
That's what I'll be requesting on the agenda, yes, sir. Yeah, I know it wasn't.
I specified exactly if they're going to discontinue the current branding, go with the city of sculpture rebranding or whatever.
Well, I don't know what we'll do for overall branding, I, I'm, I don't actually hate this thing. And if we want to use it for our official logo and economic development, I'm fine. But for branding, tourism, people coming to Wapon, they come to Wapon, the number one reason is the city of sculpture, the most famous of the sculptures is the end of the trail. People will come to Wapon and see that statue. I know we've had this conversation, but like you, when you were the mayor, I put the flag back up, it was that when I became the mayor. And I think again, I always appreciated when you were the mayor, you often had your picture taken with that flag. I know, I thought that was cool.
But I'm just trying to clarify for people in city and myself.
Yes.
What the meeting was about.
That's what it's about. Thank you, Kyle. And Kyle, one thing you might be interested in, because I'm going to ask you to help me on it, is next October, not this year, but next year, the reporting angel statue turns one hundred years old. And I think we should have a citywide birthday party for it. So, all right, who'd like to go next? Does anyone in Zoom world want to go? So let's go, Mr. Steve Bastian, another former city council member.
Steve Bastian, seven twenty-eight Gray Street. Before a quick, I just want to say thank you to Jayden, because I can't tell you how awesome it is having that pioneer news actually covering city Wapon, so people show up and know exactly what's going on. Many years, things were getting swept under the rug and nobody knew what was going on, it's just a pleasure to have a resource we can go to besides a five paragraph thing in Daily Citizen once a month. Um, but I also support the end of the trail, it's a showstopper, it's a main event, it's an iconic piece. Uh, I believe we should use all of the sculptures for branding purposes and things, but you're looking to sell your city, sell your goods, you use your, use your big dog, you use your best asset, to me, that's it, so.
Thank you, Steve. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, I will point out, and I don't know, I'll ask the city attorney. The city ways during signage and branding thing is the last thing on the agenda, my council moved it to the top of it.
My motion second and, and vote again.
Would we like to do this while everyone's here, because that's why they're here? So with somebody, a motion for. Motion by Matta Shek, second by Langford, do I need a roll call or can I roll? We'll do a roll.
You know how much I like to talk?
I know, yes.
Vanderken.
Hi.
Langford.
Hi.
Ms. Mercy.
Hi.
Steve first.
Hi.
Matta Shek.
Hi.
All right, as has been stated, this is the third time I've asked, I'm asking to cover the generic crop logo on the wayfaring signs. I've offered to pay for it myself, however, it's the end of the trail sculpture. I am not opposed to Mike's idea of having all of the sculptures scatter around on all of the signs. And moving forward, having the welcome to Wapon signs, they should probably have the end of the trail on it. And I do think our logo should be city of sculpture, but that's a future argument. Um, I'm willing to cover the cost of the stickers and enough people raise their hands, I think we can do a sticker for each sign and do all the different statues. Because one of the arguments against this was only using the kind of the trail, I'll leave it up to you, you can approve it or deny it right now. But I guess what I'm asking for is a motion to do the stickers to have the sculptures instead of the crop logo.
You're stating that for all the wafering signs that were recently purchased.
Correct.
I'll go off on Mike's wants. Discussion and suggestion, I do appreciate, obviously, our gem is the end of the trail. But stating where the city of sculptures are using that towards the city. I would like to move forward with using all of these silhouettes on the signs if we could, and I would make that a motion to do that.
And just to clarify the motion, it'd be just a random number of the stickers, I think there's twenty-seven wayfinding signs. So seven would have this, seven would have this, six would have that kind of thing.
Correct, and then obviously do the best we can mention up if it's pointing you to the dawn of day, but that's.
Like that idea personally, all right, there's a motion by Alderman Mattishak. Is there a second or further discussion? There's a second by Vanderken. Is there further discussion? The motion is. Yes, go ahead, Pete.
This, I'm asking for the city attorney to comment. We had a request that the mayor denied to have this in closed session. We have always had this kind of potential legal discussion done in closed session. Uh, but since you won't allow that, I'm asking him to comment publicly with whatever you feel would be appropriate. Um, this issue, if any potential legal implications arise.
Well, I can, I can't talk about what litigation would be filed. Um, there are a series of cases that, that deal with, um, for example, school use of logos, but those are under direct, you know, statutory of, um, legislation that was enacted in that regard. Um, the concern that I have had, and frankly, I have had it for decades now, has to do with, with intellectual property, we would say copyright. Now, I don't have the answer to that. Um, if you go on the internet, you will very quickly find statements made that when the work of art is when the sculpture was originally commissioned by Clarence Shaler, that it was not subject to copyright, therefore it would be in the public domain and it could be freely used. Well, I get a little concerned with, you know, just following whatever I read on the internet, so I, I don't know that's really conclusive. But it certainly has been a lengthy period of time, it's possible that if there were copyright, it could have collapsed, I don't know that for a fact. I've been a little more concerned because there are a number of emblematic representations of the end of the trail, they do bear copyright symbol on them. Now, it doesn't take much to put a copyright symbol on an emblem. Okay, people do that all the time, that doesn't necessarily, that means they're claiming that they have a copyright, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's been validated. So I, I do have a concern that, um, with the, with the use of this, that it could bring about something of that nature, and of course, with, with it being publicized, that's a bit more likely, that's how those cases should be going. That's about all I can say about it, Pete. Uh, is that I certainly have a concern and I need to make you aware of that concern. Um, but at the same time, I don't claim to have an answer to that. I believe that you would probably need litigation in order to have a final answer on that.
If that were to occur, would you be representing us or would you defer it to and, and would Civic, our insurance company, be any part of this?
I don't believe Civic would cover that, we would need to find specialized counsel if that were a race. We need to have an intellectual property attorney handle. I, I, I do say, I, I would say that modifying this to be the city of sculpture and then varying, you know, the emblems, I think would make it a, a little easier kind of a situation for us. Because the focus is then put on the, the emblem being the city of sculpture as opposed to just one sculpture without any additional, you know, representation without the lettering. But, uh, that's kind of a new thing that's being brought up here today. But again, I, I, you know, I, I'm, I know you would like to have me give you something with certainty, I don't think there's any certainty on this issue.
Then my question is to the mayor, what would you propose for the flag? Hearing Mike's proposal, what would your proposal be for the flag?
I leave it alone for now and we can work on that in the future. Right now, I just want to get through the wafering signs and then hopefully tweak the new welcome to Wapon signs. So that I think those should have the end of the trail on them because, and then I think they should say city of sculpture, not actually adventurous. The flag, we could maybe have a community-wide contest or something. Um, fun fact, and I didn't know this, and it was Kyle Clark who filled me in because he's got a lot of knowledge. I was asked why the flag is red and gold, and the reason is, is that at the time Alderman Jerry Haringa, who was Black Sheep Dale's dad, he thought we should have a city flag. And the reason it's red and gold is he was a Marine and their flag is red and gold, and that's why the flag is red and gold. But he designed the flag on his own and that's why it's the colors that it is. So I thought that was kind of cool and I was really appreciative of Kyle for telling me that. Because I wondered it too, because people are like, why isn't it black and gold? I didn't know, and that's the answer. And it was just one guy who donated his time to make a flag because he thought we should have one, because he loved Wapon. But that doesn't mean we can't tweak it, but I would like to be respectful of what Mr. Haringa did on his own time designing that flag.
So, so even potentially like it's been suggested, as I told you two, three months ago, to have all seven on there?
Um, all seven might be a little much, but. Yeah, we can go forward on that. But I do know, we've been getting phone calls and requests to buy the flag. And Mr. Brooks can verify because he's got him with the utilities, no one's going to be asking to buy that flag if it's got the corn logo on it. That I do know. So, all right, there is a motion on the floor from Alderman Mattashek to go ahead and purchase stickers of all the different sculptures to cover the wayfinding sign logo, it was seconded by Nancy Vanderken, is there further discussion on it?
Yeah, I'd like to see a few.
Yeah, rock on.
And I'm, this is the last time I'll say I'm the new person here, I won't say that anymore.
You have two more weeks to pull that.
So I, I want to first, I want to go on record and thank that all the citizens, specifically in the fifth Aldermanic district for engaging in the process, appreciate all the passion and respect and respect shown to all the aldermen, it's appreciated. Um, but also like to let everyone know the statues within the city are a gift from the Shaler family. As both a citizen and alderman, I appreciate and want to celebrate them for my lifetime and beyond and hopefully preserve that heritage for the next generations as well. So just to be clear, I'm for the statues, not, no one is sitting here opposed to the statues. We're talking about, and Kyle, thank you so much for bringing this out tonight. We're talking about a simple branding change. And that's what we're talking about, I'm talking about, I saw, I heard four comments in the comments about moving the statues or the statues going away or any of that, that's not any, there's no discussion for that, that's never been the issue. At all, so if there's any misnomers about that, Kyle, again, thank you for, um, getting that square away in that, in the, in the thing. I do want to say, the council, from, from my perspective, has had twenty-four different engagement points with the marketing plan and approved every one of them knowingly along the way. So this started in two thousand seventeen, if you look at the website, the logo's been there since two thousand eighteen. The letter had changed in two thousand eighteen, the, the old tagline, which I kind of laughed about, was Wild Goose Center of Wisconsin. So I was kidding with my wife that I was going to wear some goose shirt and I represent a goose. I'm just kidding, um, so, but what I will say is there's a hundred and sixty-eight page document that is the strategic marketing plans available on the website. There's twenty-one page streetscaping plan that's also available at the website. I would encourage everyone in this room that has passion for this to go in and read and look through and, um, spend time on that data, it's good data, it was done by very good people. There were fifteen stakeholders interviewed during that process. There were nine major employers and eight agribus employers interviewed during that process. And the plan had three goals, grow the Wapon economy. We just, two months ago, landed a hundred million dollar bill with United Co-op and agricultural bill. We, the second goal is to ensure a strong workforce pipeline, COVID obviously disrupted workforce, we all know, we're all, all the businesses in town are living this and businesses everywhere. And then the, the third thing was to help create alignment in the community, that was the goal, and it was about bringing all the assets of the community together. So I'm not concerned about some stickers on some wafering signs, I'm concerned about the, doing the right process. If we're going to modify the, the, the plan, the strategic plan, my, I'm all for that, but I'm for doing it correctly. Not getting a motion for some wafering signs stickers today and then worrying about something else tomorrow, I'd rather have a whole plan laid out and laid out to you, you deserve that as citizens of this town. You don't deserve a bunch of social media rhetoric, you deserve to have a plan and a vision cast. What's the end game here, where are we going, where does this end up? I don't think anybody sitting here is opposed to, to revisiting the, the plan, but let's do that properly. Let's, let's engage the marketing firm that developed the plan and reengage. So I, I don't know.
We don't have.
All right, so I have a different motion, but I don't know.
There's a motion on the floor.
Correct.
All right. Well, I think we'll do a roll call, but there's a. Oh, yeah.
You know, to build off of what Dan was saying, there's been a lot of misinformation on social media and outright lies put out there about the situation. Okay, and at the last month's meeting, there was a simple question on the floor, do we put stickers on the wafering signs? And there was no motion made. Okay, there wasn't a vote against it, there wasn't a vote to get rid of end of the trail or anything like that. And like Dan said, there's been a lot of stuff on there about getting rid of the signs and people talking about it tonight or getting rid of the statues, not the signs. But if you look and do just some simple research and you don't even have to read the comprehensive plan, all you have to do is look at the cover of it. The cover, the front page of our comprehensive plan from two thousand and eighteen says Wapon, Wisconsin, city of sculpture. It has a picture of the end of the trail statue on there, okay? And you go to our website on the homepage, there's a welcoming video that says city of sculpture and talks all about our statues. The tourism brochure still have it, it's a major part of the plan that was put together. There's not a single discussion that I've been here in several election cycles now that has been to get rid of the end of the trail or anything like that or to ignore it. So again, all I ask is that you guys, when you see this stuff on Facebook, do some of your own research, ask questions of your alderman and find out the truth before everybody gets all, you know, yelling and screaming at each other like has been going on here. None of that stuff that's on there has been discussed. And this decision for these stickers was made back in twenty twenty or at twenty twenty, I think it was. Uh, and in fact, Ron, you yourself tabled that discussion last year when you sat right in that chair and had a chance to make a motion and vote on it yourself. You decided to hold it till now when you're a mayor.
At least now you can hear it.
You didn't do it yourself, I think is a little disingenuous too.
Well, I appreciate that, you're not wrong on what you said, the reality is we are taking the statue off the signs if we don't change it. We are taking it off the welcome to Wapon signs if we don't change it. We used to have banners that had the end of the trail, they're down, we used to have park benches that had it, they're gone, we used to have garbage cans that had it and they're gone. And when I sat there, the sign showed up in December of last year and I asked Marilyn Nichol to put them on ice because I was the incoming mayor and wanted to have this discussion and we're having it now. I would have liked to have had this in May, but the United Co-op deal was a bigger and more important. And you're right, if it's on the website, you know, what's so wrong with having it on the signs?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it having on the signs. I have a problem with it being everywhere and I have a, probably, if you listen, you'd know what I'm talking about. Okay, so you know what I'm talking about then. So what I'm saying is, and like Mr. Schwang and I talked about, I've always found it a little odd that the end of the trail sticker. that the end of the trail sticker is on a sign pointing me to a different statue. Right? And I'm all for using end of the trail. But I don't think it's every single thing that we have to stick it on.
That's why I'm hoping this is a good compromise where we came up with tonight.
Exactly.
All right. The motion on the floor is from Alderman Mattishek to go ahead and get stickers of silhouettes of all of the sculptures. It's seconded by Nancy. I'm still offering to cover up the two grand of it, price over that. I'm going to really rely on all the people who raised their hands and were willing to help. We'll do a roll call vote on that and I hope you vote for it. Angie, please do the vote.
Langford.
Hi.
Vanderkin.
Hi.
Seaburst.
No.
Westfall.
Hi.
Kismerski.
No.
Mattishek.
Hi.
Motion carries for the two. Before we move on to the consent agenda, you all want a sticker on for the meeting, you want a five-minute recess to exit. Can I be where one? So you get. Can I order that? We'll take a five-minute recess and I'll even make official.